Recording in pride, that must have been Telesco.
Oh.
All right, we're going now.
Okay. Then welcome everybody to the June twenty-three meeting of the Oklahos Park Authority. We are gonna just get going. I will ask for a roll call of attendance for the folks in the meeting, the the board members in the meeting. And I'll just go in the order that I see them. So I'll start with Alan Dutton. Richard Dellinger.
Here.
Jennifer McAllister.
Here.
And Joe Andrasco is here. That's four members. Those are all the members present. We don't yet have a quorum, but we do expect Denise to join in a few minutes and then we will be able to establish a quorum with five members present. And once we do that, we can do the business of the meeting, which is to approve the budget. But I know Denise has seen the materials and she can join the discussion in progress and we can ask her if she's comfortable or if we should recap any discussion that's already occurred when she does join. So we do have an abridged agenda today. In the interest of time, I'll just buzz through it. So the next thing up is acceptance of minutes from the five eighteen meeting. I've gave them approval. I think they look correct. I didn't notice anything that was really conceptually wrong, but I'll ask, um, does anyone have any edits to the minutes?
Good to me.
Okay, love positive confirmation. So hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the five eighteen twenty-three minutes.
Second.
And, oh, we can't do that. We don't have a quorum. We can't do any business.
Correct.
So I think we should table that for now. I think we can go back into the agenda. The next item up is public comment. So we can open it up. Larry, if you could, for the public comment, I don't see any attendees.
Yeah, there are no attendees.
Okay. I'll give it three seconds for any attendees to jump in. Okay. With that, let's close public comment. The next item is report of the chair. I'm just gonna keep it very simple. We're just gonna try to pass a budget today. It's very important work. I know folks have put a lot of work into it. And I'm excited to kind of figure out how we're gonna move on into the rest of twenty twenty-three and into twenty twenty-four. There's a good amount in there for capital projects, so that's what I'm really interested in in seeing. And just for the minutes, I'll note that Denise Brown just arrived. And I just want her to be able to chime in and note her presence and confirm her audio.
Um, here.
Okay, beautiful. So now we do have a a quorum. Really quickly, uh, I'll close out the report of the chair saying the financials are still great. And like I said, looking forward to the budget discussion and going into fiscal year twenty-four. And let's move back to the minutes. I'll make the motion again to approve the minutes from the five eighteen twenty-two three meeting. And I'll ask for a second.
So moved.
Okay, we all said so far Denise that we didn't have any comments, but Denise, I'll I'll ask for you. Did you have any comments on the, um, I know there was a lot there about the tennis update and the pergola?
I do not have any comments. I don't know, Rich. If you do.
Rich, Rich noted earlier that he he doesn't.
Okay.
Okay, I thought it was, I thought it was good.
Good. Then I'll just do just a voice quote. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And Jen, I don't think we can hear you.
Sorry. Aye.
Okay, and that was all five. So that's unanimous, uh, no abstentions, no dissent. So those minutes are approved. And we can go back into the agenda. Item number five is the FY twenty-four annual budget. And Alan, I think you're gonna be taking us through that because Mark, the controller, our financial guru, was not able to make it to the rescheduled time.
So Joe, thank you for the privilege of being able to do this. It's most kind of you, Mr. Andrasco and the rest of the committee. So please bear with me as I have not presented a budget of this type to anybody before. So if I'm too long-winded, let me know if I'm whatever it is. And so just and Joe, I'm not sure. I think everybody got sent the information out. Whether we need to put anything up on, um, if we're gonna put anything up, it would just be the kind of the the cover sheet, the summary, which has everything in it, but it may not be necessary. So just from a process point of view, what happened, Gary and and Mark and myself got together probably about two or three times to to meet and go over the budget for next year and put together the final documents. And this is what we put together. So, um, just, you know, from a process point of view, you know, what makes up the budget? We have the operating budget and we have the capital budget. So we're gonna talk about both of those. I I'm not taking people to school here, but you know, the operating budget is revenue minus expenses. And that gives us our operational net income. And and for the year two thousand twenty-four, our operational net income is budgeted to be four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Where we put all those numbers together. So forty sixteen thousand dollars in the bank. So from that, we need to start deduct to deduct things. Okay, so the first thing we take off is the lease payments. So we basically have two forms of lease payments. One is for the golf carts. And the other is for the equipment that Jim Shell has been buying. And that actually comes to about one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So that's the cash that we pay out. We will pay out next year for, and that comes out of the four hundred and sixteen profit. Ninety-six for the cards and sixty thousand for the for the golf course equipment. Also, what comes out of that money that we make is debt service or payments to the city, which take come out in two forms. Basically, we basically get charged two bucks for every round. So I think we had about thirty-nine thousand or maybe forty-five thousand rounds, depending if you caught about paid or unpaid. So we give the city money for that. We also pay interest on our debt. And that comes to about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So overall, that two hundred and sixty-nine thousand comes out of our four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that we put in our pocket, we hope to next year, which leaves us a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars left in the bank. However, we look to spend two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in capital next year.
Sorry, that's a hundred and forty-six thousand that we would stash away in the bank.
Left in the bank, Joe. Yes, that's after we paid our leases and we paid our debt service.
But we're starting with cash in the bank.
Yeah, so I'm a cash in the bank, which is our net income, four hundred and sixteen, not when I say net income. You know, we we have revenue and we have expenses. And by the time you took the revenue, take expenses off, there's four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-four budget.
Which, but that's just, suppose we had zero in the bank. At the end of the year, if everything goes to budget, we would have four hundred and sixteen thousand.
Not so much what's in the bank. It's so much when I said, well, when I said in the bank, it's what we're actually gonna make in profit, not not in the bank. I'll get to what we have in the bank. Mark told me it's it's a lot, it's more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, what we have is a, um, by the time we have a hundred and four, we have a hundred and forty-seven thousand surplus money that we make and then, but we're having two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that we're gonna spend in capital that we say at this moment in time. So that leaves us in a negative position, cash hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And we say to ourselves, how can we do that, right? Well, at the end of this year, Mark told me we're gonna, this fiscal year, we're gonna have six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the bank.
Yeah.
So of that six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we'll be able to fund the shortfall of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars and still have five hundred thousand dollars in the bank at the end of fiscal two thousand twenty-four from a cash flow point of view. That's just big picture. We guys, we okay, I didn't, you know, I didn't realize we had these lease payments and debt services and it just tells us exactly where we are, what we can do. So that's big picture. Any questions so far?
Okay. Alan, when you say at the end of this year, you're talking about June thirtieth?
Um, the end of this year, we will have six, at the end of this, yes. June thirtieth, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the bank.
Okay, and then July first. Okay, according to Mark. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's actually get now to the actual, what's gonna, what's going on next year? What 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 are we looking at? What are we saying? So obviously, there's two areas that we look at. One is revenue and one is expenses. So revenue is obviously the first thing we look at. And the other thing is, we looked at three things. Three kind of things come from from a comparison point of view. There's obviously four or five different columns in these, in these, in these budgets here. And what I look at is, what do we actually do in fiscal year twenty-two? Because that's audited, that's in the books. What did we forecast for this year? Because we got eleven months in the bank, pretty much. So we're kind of close, you know, to what we forecasted, what we budgeted. Those are the three kind of comparison metrics that 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 we used. So in revenue, right? There are two main areas of revenue we look at. One is the golf revenue, which is the biggest part. That's two million one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And then there's other revenue as well. So that gives us our total revenue number for the year. So when we look at the golf revenue, let's see, how do we get to our two, two, two million one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars? So basically, golf rounds is is one of the biggest areas obviously that we look at. And we look at, looking at the numbers, the golf rounds, we could actually we're budgeting next year to do thirty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-seven rounds. So what does that mean? We think we're gonna do forty-three thousand six hundred rounds forecast this year. And in two thousand twenty-two, we did thirty-eight thousand. So we are under what we what we forecasted for the end of this year. And we're saying we're gonna do thirty-nine thousand rounds next year. Yeah, you see it. You see it right there on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Figured out how.
So, you know, that that is ten percent.
Of course.
That's ten percent less than we are projecting to do this year. From forty-three down to thirty-nine. Okay. ID cards, you know, move, that's on, that's on the round side. The ID cards, we're looking to basically a five-dollar increase on the ID cards going up pretty negligible. Season passes, carts are actually a car revenue, pretty similar. So it's really on 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 the on the golf rounds where, you know, we are where we make our money. But it's ten percent less than we did this year. So a little bit, you know, maybe on the conservative side, but this year was a great year, guys, you know, so as far as, oh, you know, the weather and stuff like that. So we're comfortable with coming in with those numbers. On the, on the golf side. Then we looked at the other revenue. And here again, um, other revenue, tennis revenues going up a couple of grand. We do have an additional eighteen thousand there for housing rental, because we're gonna be able to rent it for that period of time. And we just put forty-eight thousand in for restaurants, which is four thousand times twelve, basically. So uh, there, and the other revenue, um, this is actually some percentage we take from golf now, some of the fees that we get. So that's the reason why that is gone up down there. So, um, overall, um, you know, our total revenue is forecasted two million two-six-one compared to a forecast this year, two million three-six-one, and an actual of two thousand twenty-two, two million one oh three. So it's, you know, that's what we're looking at on the revenue side. Questions, any questions?
I just have one question on the revenue. Are we giving up on any golf simulator revenue for this year? Do you don't think it's possible?
We didn't put any, any in, because we're not sure. I mean, there's there's revenue, revenue, there's golf simulator revenue and golf simulator expenses. We put them in the budget the last two years and have not done it. And I'm I'm just not sure if it's good policy to put, put it in this, this next fiscal year, because we haven't really started any discussions on it, to be honest with you. So we did not, we can, we decided not to do that.
Okay.
Well, I I know this hasn't been dealt with or it hasn't been dealt with because I know that there's not enough people probably to tackle it, but the ad revenue is like something I think we should look at for going down the road.
What is that, by the way?
Well, I think at one time, it was suggested that we would use the golf carts to have people advertise on the golf carts and their businesses or whatever they, stuff like that. And we never really did anything with that. So just thought maybe we should try to figure out some different way to bring in some ad revenue. Down the road. So I know it's probably a a large thing to tackle, to try to promote golfers to put advertising on the carts, but just think that's something we could look into.
Okay.
So and I guess that would also be, so there's nothing for the simulator, so he decided not to put it in, but
I think it's easy to add it afterwards if we have to, if we do it, rather than putting in and not doing it, um, was our thoughts, basically, I think, you know?
Right.
Any other questions on revenue?
Well, I'll just be interested to see if it's on the expense side, but I'm thinking you're saying it's not on the expense side either.
You're right, Joe. I'd like, yeah, it's not.
On the ad revenue, yeah, I mean, historically, it was never more than like two thousand, I think. So if we get some, if we put some resources towards it and we get some ad revenue, great, but it's not gonna be a real changer to the financial statements. I would a question, Alan or Paul, do you have more info on this other revenue? Because it has kind of blown up in the reforecast. And I mean, blown up, it's sixteen thousand dollars in the reforecast versus a budget of thirteen hundred. Going up to twenty-four. So is it something that we instituted in the part of this year? That's gonna continue into twenty-four?
Yeah, I I asked Mark about that. And let's see. It's golf now.
What it is that we, I I believe, and I'm, Denise, sorry to cut you off, but I believe is Golf Now charges the the patrons, the book with them fee to book, and I think we get fifty percent of that. And obviously, the sixteen thousand is a, is an actual number or close to an actual number.
Sure.
And and it's gonna continue for the whole year next year. So Mark's comfortable putting that number in, Joe.
Okay, great.
Well, am I right in saying that, Denise? Is that what Mark told you?
Yeah, that's what he told me.
And this is a new deal with Golf Now?
No idea.
No, I don't think so.
It's for the, it's, it has to do with the POS system, too. Pass and barters, including rounds paid to Golf Now for our POS system, is what Mark wrote back to me. Does that make much more sense?
I'm gonna guess that when our members book and our annual pass holders book, they don't get charged a service fee. People who aren't members, if they book through Golf Now or the website, there's a service fee and we probably split that with them.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it is, Paul.
Okay.
I can also tell.
I'm looking at the actuals and I know we've been with Golf Now or some other form of Golf Now for several years. And they're not there in the actuals for twenty-one, twenty-two, et cetera. So I'm, that's what I was just wondering if this is a new structure or something.
You know, Joe, we we got six thousand dollars in twenty-two and, you know, Golf Now has exploded as far as the amount of people booked. Golf Now, so many more people. So it may, you know, that may be the reason why.
Also, um, in twenty twenty-one and prior, we had Easy Links, a totally different company, which was
That is true.
Like often.
Yeah.
So that's why you're not, we didn't have any.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay, thanks for that reminder. Okay.
Uh, the other thing, just so you know, uh, in two thousand nineteen, we did do some ad revenue on our GPS units. And I think we charged four different people two hundred and fifty dollars. And we, you know, it was a little bit annoying to some of the golfers. We even had someone punch the screen because they saw two ads.
That doesn't seem like a reasonable response, but that's okay.
Now, so it might be a little different. I don't know. We had old carts back then.
Same carts.
Oh, same carts? I thought we have the newer carts.
All our carts now are three years old, I believe, but
Well, anyway, it's it's something we can, we can, we can think about. There seems to be pluses and minuses, because that maintenance expense on the screen must have been not fun to pay.
Five fifty. Maybe a little less.
So that brings us to revenue and I just did a quick calc. Not a back of the napkin, this is the real number, but so a four percent pullback in revenue versus where we think we're gonna end this fiscal year. But still growth over last year budget. Now, last year budget was probably a little conservative, given that we've knocked it out of the park. And so I think that seems reasonable. You know, I I usually like to think, okay, if you're, if you're doing, I think we all recognize we're doing really well on revenue, on rounds. Likelihood is that we're not gonna stay there forever. I like to see some sort of a pullback on that. We've got something pretty reasonable here with a decrease in the number of revenue rounds that we do. And an increase in the rate per round, right? I'm seeing thirty-five, forty-seven, moving to thirty-six, forty-seven, which is a deliberate dollar, I'm sure.
Yes.
And so, and then flat on carts. So we're not really anticipating much of a move on carts. And so that seems like a very reasonable revenue forecast to me. A five-ish percent contraction, totally, totally on board with it.
First test.
That's that's one, one view.
I don't Other comments on revenue?
I don't just, I I think, I think it's reasonable. I understand the logic behind it. So I agree.
Okay. Shall we move to expenses? Okay, so Joe, just pop down one, just go onto the total expenses, just one line down if you could. Sorry, up, 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 up.
Oh, sorry.
Just, I'm sorry, that there's a total there. So
I'll get this.
Total expense is a million eight-four-six. And what's interesting on this is that, um, almost sixty-six percent of our expenses in labor and benefits and thirty-three, thirty-four percent is in our is in the rest, basically. So, um, there is not a lot of changes in the the thirty-four percent of the expenses, which is, you know, listed line by line here. But there is a pretty big expense compared to what we're forecasting in labor. You know, you can probably see it. Personnel expense, personnel expense going from a, a million ten forecast to a million one-four-seven. Interestingly enough, when we did budget for personnel for this year, we put a million one in. So you know, that is quite a, a, a big expense. Obviously, the areas we look at, one big difference on our upcoming year coming up compared to what we did this year is addition of the general manager's position is reflected in these numbers. On the, on the personnel side, there are no increases in staffing in Jim's area. Um, there was one increase there which was put forward for a nature person to take care of the trails, but we actually took that one off because that was an additional position. So there's not, now, obviously with COVID and with trying to get people to work, especially in the grounds area, great gyms area, some of the rates are 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 reflected a little higher, which is one of the reasons why course and seasonal is 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 higher than the forecast for this year, even though compared to what we budgeted last year, it's it's not that much higher. And, you know, benefits are also higher. So those are the the main reasons for the increase on the personnel, uh, on the, on the labor side, which is sixty-four percent of our total other budget.
And this contemplates and reflects mandatory minimum wage increases.
Yes.
And kind of staying ahead of that, because I think what we've found is that minimum wage doesn't really draw. So we've kind of had to go above and beyond it, or
This reflects This reflects, I believe, Joe, above and beyond in the grounds area, you know, in Jim's area, where it is difficult to get people, but I believe in in Paul's area, which is the starters and the golf shop. There is, there is probably not as much upward wage pressure as as there is in Jim's area.
Jim, Paul, is that, is that your understanding of how this is constructed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say so. Absolutely. Um, obviously.
Hey, Jim.
Hi.
Sometimes it's hard for me to keep people here, you know, paying minimum wage. And I'm, they have to play golf, otherwise it's really not worth it to them to be working.
And my guys, well, there's really not much interest in golf. And they, you know, it's manual labor and with what's out there in the landscaping world. I really don't have a choice, but
Yeah.
Any other further questions on payroll?
I don't think so. I mean, we know it's going up, personnel expense.
Okay, um, from a big picture point of view, the other expenses, um, we're forecasting about six hundred and seventy thousand total dollars for this year. And we're budgeting six hundred and ninety-nine thousand for next year, which is a four and a half percent increase. I haven't really highlighted line by line items here. I mean, we can go through and see if there's any things that you know, uh, you know, I've gone up an awful lot more, but it's, it is a four and a half percent increase forecast this year to act, to budget next year. Six seventy to six ninety-nine. So I guess the question is, what makes that up? And, you know, if you look part maintenance is only going up eleven thousand dollars. Insurance, you know, uh, sorry, admin, admin's going up three twenty-two to three oh seven. You look at insurance is up fourteen, you know, fourteen percent. Advertising is up, but on a percentage basis, it's only two grand, you know. Overall expense, you know, so it's not, it's a five percent increase.
What's making up sales and operations?
I have no idea. Sales and operations, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
And I'm assuming the credit card fees are lower than the reforecast because our, our revenue is lower?
Uh, yes. That's just a percentage basis, Joe, and I would say.
That's what I figured.
Yeah, I'm really, I don't know what sales and operations is. I can find out, but I, you know, it's not a a truly significant number, but
Yeah, but it's double than where you're trending, right?
Yeah, oh, I hear it. It's gonna Yeah, oh, I hear it, it's gonna be something, look at operations in two thousand twenty two, twenty one thousand. That was all the expenses in the clubhouse, basically, it's not sales, it's operations. This is the money, I remember now in twenty two, this is the money that was, that we, we overspent in the clubhouse when it was done, so. I would imagine that might be some of the operating things in the restaurant that are not on Don's side, but on our side. But I don't know exactly what those, those would be.
That makes sense, okay.
Okay.
And it's in the direction that I'm not worried about, I mean, it's not egregious in terms of dollar amount.
Yeah.
Three thousand dollars, and in, on expense, it's not in the direction that I'm concerned about, it's an over expectation of expense.
Yeah.
The two places where I'm concerned and um I think Jim may be able to help us with one of them is utilities and water. Which seem to be taking a little bit of a contraction from where they were so far this year, the reforecast of this year, and it just doesn't seem like prices for those things are gonna cut.
Agreed, uh. I kind of just throw something at that because it's never really in our control. But uh, I see the reforecast is a little higher than what we had in budget. Now that I'm looking at it and uh, I mean, I don't know what else to say about it other than as far as utilities. I mean, they are what they hand us, I, I honestly feel like, I don't know if we, uh, you know how you can get electricity from uh, other companies other than EverSource?
Are you asking how to do it, or are you asking?
No, I, you know how we can, I think that that would be a big savings for us.
So, so let me tell you how you can get less money, basically, I just cut my, my, my EverSource bill by fifty percent because I've gone with Constellation and I used Constellation managing the Yale Club and they're a reputable company and that. I, I was paying twenty four dollars, twenty four cents a kilowatt hour with EverSource, I'm paying thirteen cents a kilowatt hour with Constellation, so it may make sense to bid, bid, bid that out, if we, we probably should do that.
I would agree, I would agree. Same thing too, in my former life, when I used to manage a building and we used Constellation.
Yep, they're, they're a good company and they're like forty five percent less than, than EverSource at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, right now, and sometimes it can go the other way, but at the moment, it does make sense to go that way.
Especially since EverSource just doubled their delivery rates.
Right, and you can also lock in with Constellation for a period of time and get out of it if you have to.
Yeah, I've used Ambit, so you could, maybe we could compare prices and see for a, a second comparison.
And as far as water goes, um, I try to shoot for an average number of where I think water will land, but I can't predict the weather. So there's no way to, it's, it's like gas and oil when there's ma- major fluctuations, there's no way to tell how much I'm gonna use. So I shoot.
That includes the watering of the courts, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'm. So the only places I'm seeing increases are in park maintenance and equipment expense, I assume, the equipment expense I know from history is um, kind of contractual. And of, and if we broaden this, it's a little bit of money in advertising, a little bit of money in sales and operations, and then insurance, which is also contractual. Um, and then I look at this decrease in water, which is twenty thousand dollars. And I'm, I don't. That, that's the one that sits the worst with me. If we can do an amended approval, I would probably just pump another ten thousand in there.
Fine by me.
I mean, I, I, I know, I look at the history and I've, I've been here, if you don't need the water, you're not using it. Right, like, we've got a twenty two actual of thirty five, it was, you know, um. So if you don't end up using that, great, but the, the delivery costs and the usage costs are just, they're going up. We're all feeling it, so.
If, if you look at history, you're looking at fifty thousand, fifty five thousand, thirty four thousand. Forecasting seventy four thousand, because I, I think this summer was a, was a really record one, this last summer, right, Joe?
Last, yeah, twenty twenty two.
That was like at least an extra twenty thousand dollar expense, I remember it's dry as a bone in July and August, so.
Yep.
The question is, how does fifty five compare, compared to, but I think to be on the safe side, Joe, you're probably right, it could, you know, be higher.
Sure.
Okay, let's keep that one in our heads when we do a motion.
Do you want to take, okay, okay, got it.
Jim, I have a question.
Sure.
So um, the gas blowers and everything are in equipment expense?
It's in uh, there should be a small equipment line there, but it's not showing on this. Equipment expense has to be, you know, what my mechanic spends, I think that the, I can tell you, let's see what's in there, it's equipment maintenance, building maintenance, small equipment, gasoline and diesel fuel. And employee work clothes are the categories in that.
Lumped into equipment expense?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Any reason to think that that's going up twenty percent, or is that a solution to our ten thousand dollar increase in water?
I'm not really sure how that uh took that jump. Did building maintenance get shifted? No, that was.
And if you look at it, seventy, yeah, seventy four to uh, seventy nine and ninety six, I mean, we may be able to shift some money out of there and put that into water, if, I mean, this is now.
I, well, I have a feeling that that is not. I don't remember it being like that, but uh.
Well, you put it, you put ninety three in the budget last year, Joe, and you put ninety six in the budget this.
No, you're right, okay, so.
You know, I'm just figuring out, this is, these are the numbers that you give us, I think, right?
Okay.
So you are doing a fantastic job in managing or, or whatever.
I'm great, um.
But it went down in the reforecast, which is good.
Gas and diesel wasn't as bad as we expected, maybe, or, uh, I'm not sure.
Well.
Because I know that my equipment maintenance is pretty much near the target on the budget and building maintenance is a little, little over. Uh, small equipment, I know I have some expenditures coming on that. But that doesn't, I don't know where the, where the category, I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately. Uh, where I beef that up a little bit, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you beefed up the uh, building maintenance, one of mine, went up uh, eight grand compared to what we're actually spending this, this year, Jim.
Well, there we go, I mean.
Yeah, twenty five uh, we're forecasting, you, you're saying we need to spend thirty three. Um, I'm looking at the breakout here.
Okay.
That's the big difference.
Trying to call that up.
Should we leave it like it is, Joe, and then think about it when it comes to the final vote, so how do you want to proceed?
Well, are we saying we believe in the increase, or?
Can we leave the water as is and leave the equipment expense as is and call it a cushion?
Could we bring the water to sixty five and hit the equipment expense at eighty six? And kind of think if that's a more reasonable appropriation of the three hundred and forty seven thousand. I mean, the three forty seven doesn't change the, and budget wouldn't change, but it's just a little bit better geography for tracking purposes.
Sure.
Swapping the, changing the figures a little bit. And Jim, the various conversations in the, that's being discussed in the city about um making changes to some of the equipment that you have, is that potentially gonna happen this coming fiscal year?
No, that's not, if it passes, uh, it's not a requirement until January first, twenty twenty eight.
Okay.
For properties bigger than two acres.
Okay, because I know that would be a huge undertaking for.
It is.
I don't.
Joe, you need to change that ten thousand number to go up one lines for the equipment expense.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, yeah, Joe, I think you're gonna go up one.
Oh, yeah, 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 yep.
Yeah.
And I'll put a note out here for twenty twenty eight plus fifty.
No kidding.
We'll see, I don't think it'll be that, but it'll be something. Um, okay, so we like this geography within this category a little bit better, can we agree?
Yep.
In principle?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, you want to move a bit, um? Didn't.
Down to cart expense, this is contractual, right?
I think this is the uh, property taxes we have to pay on our um, carts. This is really annoying, I think. It's like having a bloody car, you gotta pay the city because of the privilege of having a car, we got eighty of them.
Oh, my gosh.
That's what it is.
Is that what it is?
I think so, yes. In fact, I know so.
But it's a relatively small group of line items.
Yeah, but look at twenty, one hundred and twenty six thousand, why?
No, 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 leases, no, that, that's different, uh, that's, I.
Yeah, that was an old lease agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the cart expense, includes those three items, yes.
Those leases numbers, those big numbers are now what, what we're paying cash wise, you know, what I spoke about at the beginning of, of when I, you know, taught him.
Yes.
And I guess this what shows us here, we're gonna make four hundred and sixteen, the two sixty nine is the, the leases on the carts uh, and the leases on Jim's brand new equipment we're all buying him, uh, leaves us one hundred and forty six thousand dollars and then the cat, the two hundred and seventy four thousand dollars worth of capital leaves us a net uh, cash effect of one hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. However, we do have this amount of money in the bank, blah, 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 blah. Okay.
So tell us, let's talk about the capital expenses, I, or, or, or Alan, do you have a plan on what to talk about next?
No, no, that, that's done, that's the operating statement, that's pretty much the way we have it at the moment, and then um, we have the, the capital um, proposed capital budget, um. And.
Well, there's, uh, so in my mind, there's really two things to go to next, right? The city stuff is contractual, we know what that's gonna be, Mark calculates that. The, that's our city payments um, per the lease agreement, the amended lease agreement. There's two other categories of non-operating expense, the first is our um, what do we call it? Commercial debt, right? Um, and my only que- uh, so the two things are the commercial debt and the capital expense. Capital expense, I'm interested in what the big items are, commercial debt, I guess I'm interested in what we're adding to it.
Okay. Did, were you not presented?
Yes, so Joe.
The worksheet from Mark?
There is a line item there, uh, which we've recently uh, um, the ones that were added um, were two fairway mowers uh, for eleven thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars in, in twenty three, and twenty three thousand dollars in twenty four. Um, two greens mowers, um, which uh, would add fifteen thousand dollars, so it's forty eight thousand dollars of um, commercial debt, those are the, for those four pieces of equipment.
These are these.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, eleven thousand for your sidewinder. Um, plus um, some things outstanding, which is your mini excavator, utility cart and your toughco blower.
So nothing that we're taking off the commercial debt schedule, two things that we're adding. Um, but.
That's not exactly true. Four pieces of equipment. Four pieces of equipment.
Sure, yeah, um, but, and it's not exactly true, there are two things that look like they're unwinding this fiscal year because they're not the standard amount, okay, so we are taking some things off.
The greens mower, yeah, the greens mower um, for April eighteen is coming off. The HD utility car um, for nine thousand six seven four is coming off as well, Joe.
Uh, Jim, these two, the fairway mowers and the greens mowers were half year propositions for twenty three and their full year for twenty five, twenty four onward?
Uh, that's, you know, remember we ordered the fairway mowers in twenty one?
Yeah.
And we got them last October, so the payments started uh, should have been early this year, so it should reflect more of a full year. I don't think that Mark has worked this up yet to the point that uh, it's accurate, so I'm thinking that that, that the fairway mowers and the okay, there we go, let's look at that, that's the right spot.
Okay, but this is the full force payment that we'll need to make in twenty four. Fifty nine, six, six, two.
Right.
So Jim, looks like we got six months worth of fairway mowers and, and about uh, maybe four months worth of um, or, well, no, six months worth of greens mowers as well. For this fiscal year, which meant we got them maybe in December or something like that, November, December.
The greens mowers came in in March, the fairway mowers finally arrived a year and four months late in October.
Okay.
So.
Okay, well, there it is for us, right? So this is a five percent increase. Um, I understand it, it's manageable, and actually, we're not adding any equipment, right? The equipment that we're adding is increasing because it's more months of the year that are being paid.
Yes, yes.
And there's no new purchases that are happening.
At twenty four?
Fiscal twenty four.
The, I was hoping there would be, there's one, two, three, four, five items there. Like I said, market hasn't finished working up this worksheet.
Mm hmm.
And uh, it's not done. They are, I mean, they are relatively small items. But uh, still, it adds up to uh, sixty thousand dollars practically.
Did you get Mark a list, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, I gave him that very sheet and we're, right where it says JD tractor bucket, all the way down to greens roller are the things that I'd like to, you know, acquire.
Oh, so they're here on the left under cost.
On the left.
The ten thousand, the thirteen thousand, the eleven.
Yeah.
That's them.
Yeah, I do, I, I do see here, though, it says purchase, right?
So it's to purchase.
So it's, they're actually not being thought of as commercial debt, they're thought of as out and out purchases.
Oh. Okay. So, you wanna take that route, that's fine by me. But there are one, two, three items coming from one company which could be, you know, treated the same as all the other equipment we've ever bought and and could be financed through Wells Fargo on a dollar out basis at the end of five years, if we wanted to do that.
I'm not seeing these informing any numbers elsewhere in the file.
Right. Right.
This goes a bunch of places. And then this probably goes. So it seems. P one, two, two. P one, oh, that's where I was, okay. So the fifty-nine in commercial debt is accounted for, but it does look like we're short that sixty. Which, I'm sorry, um. Is listed here as a purchase, but I'm not seeing that number reflected elsewhere in the budget. And you were not expecting to purchase them out now.
And, uh, I said maybe a couple of them we could, but we, like, I, maybe he didn't have time to. Put the numbers through the, the rows there, I, I'm not sure.
Because if it's a purchase, would that go on the capital budget side, um, Joe?
Technically, it would, right?
Yes.
Okay. So this looks like something that may have slipped through the cracks then, basically.
Yep.
So is the Kubota tractor part of that?
No, that would be in fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, okay.
Which also doesn't seem to be done, the sprinkler does seem to be yeared out.
That's been on there a while, I think that, uh.
I see, okay.
I keep pushing it, uh, it's coming now.
Okay, well, this is just my local version. I'm thinking if we do finance this with five-year structures, it adds twelve thousand. To the commercial debt budget. Which changes it a little bit, right now, we're at a twenty-seven percent increase versus prior year. So that can work, it's easier to bite off twelve thousand after operating. Rather than sixty thousand in capital.
Yeah.
Expense.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know.
Yeah, it adds to the debt though, right, Joe, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, and there's always a, um, you know, a interest component of these things, cuz.
Yeah, right.
I would. See what we can borrow from the capital expense, so that we keep our cash pretty close to where we had it here. And do something sort of halfway between this twelve and sixty. Uh, well, not really the twelve, because the twelve is not contemplated. So somewhere halfway between the thirty and the sixty, which would be purchase some, finance some others. I said it wrong again, somewhere between the zero and the sixty, which would be a scenario in which we purchase some and finance others.
Yep.
We assume, um. Fifteen and fifteen. So fifteen goes to capital and fifteen comes back into commercial debt. I'm gonna do that. In this. By, um, a kind of. Simple structure, it's gonna add twelve thousand something, twelve thousand two. Assuming we finance all of them for five years and we just take the costs, so there's no interest involved in that. So this is a low-ball estimate.
Yep.
These would actually be purchasing. And then the other fifteen, I'm gonna say we need to find a place in capital for it.
Yep, which is, will be a problem, I don't think, to be honest with you.
Okay. Um, but. We should see about. This is. And here, I think that launches us into the capital, um, expense conversation, right?
Yeah.
Shall I head there?
Yes. So just in the background to this, we, uh, I sat down with Jim and, um, Mark and Paul. And I think Denise, you sat in as well, Denise or Richard, or both, or we sat in just to talk about this. Um, to come up with these items here and, um. Pretty much where we ended up, um, obviously some discussion items, there is a twenty thousand dollar contingency number, um, in here. General reserve for unplanned items, uh, just so we know, so there's twenty thousand baked in on the bottom there that you can see. Um, but I guess working our way down, we had come up with a number, um, in the clubhouse, we do need to refurbish. Do something with the floor there, um, we weren't sure about heaters, security cameras, but there is issues, um. With the actual, you know, there's some of the roof, roof up there, I think, and Jim, what else was there? Was the guttering or something, or whether, whether it was bird's nest and stuff like that, some issues up there?
Yeah, the, uh, soffit on the putting green side, uh, off the terrace.
Yeah.
There's, there's a bunch of holes that from when the awnings came down. There's some columns that need to be repaired, which would be kind of weird and a kind of a specialty item, but we know somebody that who can do it.
Right.
Um. The, honestly, the, the stone on the floor and the terrace needs to be repointed. Uh, and there's some miscellaneous like decking repairs on the open portion of the terrace.
Yes, we put a placeholder of twenty-five thousand into that, I think, right? Okay. Um, then there was the, uh, the house, um, Jim's, uh, you know, the house, basically, and, uh. Hmm, carryover from last year on, um, uh, or whatever, so. The bath in the first floors we finished, I think, Jim, if you want to address any of those items.
Uh, the bath on the first floor is not done. The, uh, floors are not done. Um, and the roof, well. It's old as dirt, but it's holding in there.
Can we do a roof for sixteen thousand?
I, you know what? The contractor that I got, the, the, the one that did the siding over at the house. I swear he responded to me, but I can't find it anywhere, the, uh, quote. He was supposed to update me, let me see if I can find it here. Nope. Sorry.
Well, okay, um, you, we know, this is a budget and with budgeting comes. Allocation and appropriation when the year actually plays out, so if that roof needs to be done. I don't think it ends up costing sixteen thousand dollars.
I think you're probably right, that is a four-year-old, five-year-old price.
Yeah. Um. But there's something there for it, so it's recognition of a need and a potential cost, so. I would be okay moving there, knowing that we have a little bit of a contingency.
Okay. Um, four thousand into the old pro shop. Um. Incidental refurbishing items, Paul, is that your area?
As far as the old golf shop?
Yeah, the old, the old pro shop, I'll say, I'm not, yeah, what was, what was that for, guys?
I'm not sure what that's for, it could be maybe finishing up some carpeting. We do have carpet there, uh, available for the other rooms.
Okay.
All I can think of.
And I guess at some stage, we'll kind of need to put an office down there, um. Not that it'll cost a lot of money, to be honest with you, maybe there may be some phone stuff down there, um, I think that's what that was.
I do know we're gonna be saving some money on our internet bill, I believe.
Yeah, because I was talking to, uh, the internet guy and I think we're gonna go with one optimum we can rather than two, so we're gonna save about. Three or four grand a year on that, I think.
Maybe that's how the utilities went down. I'm serious. Um, okay, anyway, four thousand, um, for an older building, I don't think is, um, an unreasonable thing to put into a cap budget.
Okay. Um, tennis building courts, um. Kind of guided by Mark on this, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure exactly. Um, where, what's going on, where we are, we got so many donations, of course, thanks to Richard and Denise, so, um. There is nine thousand there in there at the moment, I don't know if any looked over from last year or.
Mark was gonna, um, put for this year based on the lease payment. From the highway. To go towards if we wind up doing the six courts over for the, uh, the paint and repairs. And new, new wires. Which we're working on getting a grant. And, uh, take it from there.
Okay. Um, I think the, the next item is, is the one that I'm, um, not really sure about. The crack repair, resealing and relining in tennis parking lot, also repair damage curving, and install new drain pipe, I know. Jim, you had, um, gone out, I'd give you a price for actually repaving that, um. Or was that for a different area, I'm not sure.
Yeah, this. I would say about, uh, eight or nine years ago, I had to repair a pipe that runs from eighteen. Into one of the drains in the parking lot and. I asked for a contractor to quote me for where I repaired it all the way through the parking lot. To that new drain because it's damaged the whole way through, it's an old corrugated pipe and it's, uh, rotting out. And, uh. He included, uh, crack repair and resealing and relining the golfer parking lot. And I think that that was twenty-seven thousand, oh, we're talking about the tennis?
Yes.
Sorry, uh, no, I, I think that that, what did that come in at, Denise, fifty-six?
Your, your, your new quote came in like around fifty-something.
Sixty-three, I think, a new quote, I think, right? Or something like that?
Fifty-three?
That was just for the tennis parking lot, right? That didn't include the golf parking lot.
Right.
Right, cuz they want to rip up everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, they wanted to take it down to the dirt and. Totally do everything.
Yep.
I'm right, my recollection was like sixty-some plus thousand for the parking lot.
I think it was sixty-three thousand to rip out, to, to put new blacktop throughout or, or, or the new parking lot. And I'm not sure if that did not include the drain then, right? Cuz that's a different, different number, Jim, right?
No, the drain, the drain is a different parking lot, the, the drain that's there, the bases there are fine and those work fine.
Oh, so, so where do we get this thirty-eight thousand from then, I wonder?
Good question.
Probably some very old, old number, I would say.
So I guess the question is, what do we? What do we do with this? To me, what, this is the, obviously the number that I'm not too sure about this moment in time.
Can we borrow from Carpathia Repairs?
That's possible. We'd have to skip number one to two, though, Alan.
Right, right, right.
Um, the quote for. Uh, the one that we do want to do this year, which is eleven to twelve T. Was fifty-two, fif- forty-eight, forty-nine thousand dollars. That's a lot. And that leaves, um. You know, twenty-five, twenty-six, hopefully no overages on that car path.
I, hmm, I haven't to think that the existing car path repairs are more important than, um. The crack repair, resealing and tennis parking lot, um, just my, uh.
And I would agree, even as a tennis player, I agree with you, Alan.
Yeah, I don't think.
We've seen some great improvements in the tennis area, you've got new fencing, we're having the, you know, the capola, you know, you're doing a fantastic job there, so. I think we could use our resources on the golf course, especially in the car path areas, you know, um, you know, we get to, obviously between one and two. We spoke about doing, um, is it, was it Jim, eleven, is it?
Yeah.
That was the one, right?
Yep.
Attention of eleven. And do we speak of anything else?
Maybe fourteen to fifteen?
Uh, we're doing that repair hopefully by July first, but with the weather coming, it may not get done this year, so that. That actually. Those repairs may have to get pushed into twenty-four fiscal year because. The weather is not looking good and I don't think you're gonna be able to get here before July first. In order to get that project done, so. Um.
But do we have the money in this year's budget for that?
Yeah, and it would be a simple push. But, you know, according to the accountant, that's not how it's done.
Interesting. Cuz Joe, you know, here we go, your money in this year to do something, and if you're gonna do it the, the month afterwards, does it have to go into next year or could we be able to? Hmm, to, 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 to scroll it away, I'm not sure how that works, basically.
The, can we take an expense that's gonna be spent next year? On a project that's happening next year and call it a this year expenses, what you're asking?
Hmm, yes, so if it's a month, well, I guess it's, it's a timing issue, is it, is it drop dead at the end of the month and stuff like that?
Um, yes.
The money has to be realotted to twenty-four, I mean, the money's there, it just has to be realotted to twenty-four, there has to be an increase for twenty-four.
Right, which case you'd have to increase the twenty-twenty-four capital budget. And then you'd reduce the, then the actual cash you'd pay out in twenty thousand, twenty-three would, 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 you'd be reduced then, right?
Right, yeah, but, but, no, well, yes, but the six twenty-five. Cash position that we currently have.
Mm-hmm.
Already contemplates that not being spent. So as we think this through. We're gonna take six twenty-five currently. If we keep it two seventy-four. Down by a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Right, and we should think that our ending cash would be. Four eighty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a decent buffer still. Now, if we're going to put more money into capital expense. Which would be something that we've done before. Um. That's just gonna knock down our cash position further. Ending cash position, right?
Yep.
That's, we can choose to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would like to know that we're. Either fixing something that needs fixing or generating revenue out of it.
How much are you thinking of putting in?
Oh, I, I'm not sure, that's my role, sorry, but to be blunt, but, um, I, I go. I could come up with numbers, but they would just purely be numbers and then, you know, people would have to kind of allot into it. My approach for capital is generally, we do a project-based. Approach and say, here's what projects we need done, here's what projects we want done. Here's the estimates, roll it up.
But it sounds like it's more pointed towards the, um, cart paths. That are in more need of repairs, correct?
Seems so, now, now embedded here in this two seventy-four is thirty-eight thousand that I think I'm hearing. If we did, it would be sixty-three, but we don't need to do it all. If we did, it would be 63, but we don't need to do it all this year. So it almost seems like this is a priority two.
Yep.
Correct.
It's actually 63,000. And that knocks us down quite a bit.
Yep.
And let me, just for Mark's future, I'll just note that I, I did those. Oh, but this will be on video, so. He'll be able to watch and see me ruining his beautiful file. So that's moved and now we're at 236 on, on CapEx.
So can I, so give me just a second, the question, what do we get, Jim, what are we getting for our 75,000 for the existing car pass? What can we do with that?
Well. I'm, I've got all the paving quotes in front of me. Number 11 to 12.
Yeah.
Was between two bidders, 50,500 up to. The.
All right, okay.
So that leaves essentially 24.
One to two. What was one to two?
One to two. Let me find that. 32, 313.
So we're talking at 82,000 then for those two projects, pretty much, right? 83,000. Right? And we've got 75. In, in there. So it'd be an extra $8,000, right? Or whatever it is, $10,000. Oh, okay. What do you think about that, Paul?
It's a lot.
You like it? I mean, obviously, we, we, I think one to two is so important, okay?
Been out there a lot lately and our car paths are, are pitiful, leaving down by 6T, no good, 3T, the whites. So they definitely need some work. I think it'd have a high impact to our golfers, very visual and.
Right.
Does this include all the way up to the blue tees?
Well, that repair was supposed to be done by July 1st.
That's this year, Joe.
Oh, yeah. Oh, good, right, yeah.
All right. I think the existing car path repairs should go to 85, but that's just me or 83, that's fine, Joe. Thanks.
I know, I'm, I'm happier with round numbers.
Okay.
Now, so putting equipment purchases. And a general reserve, we're still not back up to 274.
But Jim, why don't you talk about your build, your new storage base and how important that is, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I mean, they can be built out of concrete block where they can be, if you all know what mafia blocks are, they're just giant. Cubes of concrete that are put in place to create walls. And if you've been to, you know, landscaping yard or. A rock. Of O and G yard or whatever. You see them, they, they're used to separate soil from sand, from mulch. From top dressing sand from, I mean, I'd love to have four of those that I could keep materials in and keep it neat. Right now, we have piles scattered all over our yard. And. You know, it's never really neat.
No, and that's the most important thing you want to have done next year with that $50,000, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, in my yard, that's what I'd like to have done.
Then one other quick question, do we need to spend $9,000 or do we need to spend $12,000 on the rental house?
Uh, I'm already getting complaints from that guy. He, he wants the walkway done now. It's an embarrassment, he said. So I think that we shouldn't ignore it.
Walkway, meaning?
Well, the, the walkway that goes from the driveway to his front door. It's, it's pretty bad, really, it is.
And where is that included in? Is that part of the?
It's not.
Okay. And how much is that, do you think? Is that 16,000 for the driveway repairs?
Uh, the driveway is actually only 10. I'm sorry, I keep. The driveway is 11, 3. And those guys could certainly do. That walkway, but. I think it's a matter of a few thousand bucks.
Just a few thousand dollars for the walkway, right?
Yeah.
Are you putting down stone or are you going to do a?
I think it should be a solid surface.
Oh, like carpet or something?
Maybe concrete again, except correctly. Whoever did it last time. Whatever, it's crumbling.
So what, what we do, we, we take it, we take it out of the 12, 12,000 that we got put in there at the moment? And look to change those projects maybe, or what's the best way of handling this, I wonder?
I'm missing what we're taking.
1,000 for the garage, but 3,000 for the yard improvements. But the most important thing for the tenants is the, is the walkway, right? And that's about three, three or four thousand, you said, Jim?
Well, I think apparently it is because that's, you know, the first thing he's complaining about or maybe not first, but. But.
So. I hate to do this, but. I, I scheduled this from 6:30 to 8:00 because I have to be somewhere at 8:30.
Okay.
And this is a good level of detail to get into. But. I think we are going to have to decide soon whether we want to do kind of a top level kind of idea. Or get deeper into these weeds and delay approving a budget. I do not want to do option two.
That's fine, Joe.
Especially because I think we're pretty much near the end.
Yeah.
And we can get pretty close by manipulating this. Contingency line.
Yep, got it.
I can say that this is 16, 5 now and we're at 274. We've moved this driveway and walkway into year one. So this year. At 16, 5, that'll cover both. I think you said 11, 3, right, Jim?
Yes. Plus the walkway, maybe 3.
Exactly. So 16, 5 should cover and then just by luck, our general reserve has also come down to 16, 5. We remain whole at 274. We've moved tennis, crack ceilings, all that jazz into next year. And we've upped for cart path to cover both major projects that we want to do.
Excellent, good idea. Good to go.
That's great.
Good job, Joe.
Making it happen.
They'll get your tuxedo ready after the vote, come on.
Yeah. I wish. And so we're in that exact same position we were in. Again, coincidental number, our cash position should be around 485, 485. But we've altered nothing except line item movements, right?
Yep.
And I feel good about that. I mean, having gone through all the accounts. For the summaries of accounts. These all seem reasonable and. As said, if we look at some of these NOIs from prior years. We're contracting it quite a bit by being pretty reasonable on expenses. And then conservative on revenue. Which is kind of my, my approach to this budgeting. Be reasonable with your expenses, don't go overboard. But when it comes to revenue, assume that maybe you won't make as much money as last year. And I, that's exactly what we're doing. And then reinvest in the business. So I think of cart paths as a really soft revenue generator. Because people have a terrible experience on your cart path, they talk about it, it gets around. It's makes the experience less fun and it does ding revenue because maybe somebody won't come back. So, you know, I, I think, as I think for these capital expenses, it is a little bit of an investment in things that just make the course more playable. But as we do that. We're looking at people coming back and wanting to play it and buzz. And that's, that's a good revenue generator as well. So I think, I think we're hitting the main things that I want to hit with a budget by doing this.
Can we vote on it?
Is that a motion?
Make it one.
I hear a motion for Mr. Dellinger. Does anyone have a second? Well, sorry. Rich, if I may, let me, let me kind of make a more formal motion.
Yeah.
So I will move to approve. The budget. With the following amendments. The water line item being increased by 10,000. The equipment expenses being decreased by 10,000 for the park maintenance expense to remain as is. And then with the allocations that we've made in the capital expense budget and the commercial debt budget. Remaining as per the edits that we made during this meeting. That's my, my motion. Does anyone second?
I'll second it.
All right.
It's not as simple as the first one, but yes.
Thank you, Denise.
Good point.
That's good discussion. Then let me put it to a roll call vote and I'll just go in the order that I see people. So Alan Dutton. Approve.
Yay.
Denise, Denise Brown.
Yes.
Rich Dellinger.
Yeah.
And Jen McAllister.
Yes.
And John Drasco votes yes on the budget as amended per the motion. And we will get this over to Mark, the controller for kind of finalization. And the next steps for that are to convert it into monthly budgets. Because all of this has to go by the seasonality that we experience in, in, at the park. And then ship it over to the city. So that'll be exciting to deliver it kind of in good timing for them. All right. Final order of business is motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, yeah.
All right, Rich motions. I'll second. Any opposed?
Nope.
Hearing none. Good meeting. I think we got something.
All right, thanks very much.
Thanks, everybody. See you soon.
Bye.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you.
Thank you.